Okay. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We were previously convened in closed session. I'd like to start open session, and to do that, I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So all of those who are able, please stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to start out tonight with a spotlight on education, and the Amory Women's Club is here with a nice, large check.
Good thing I'm short. Hi.
Hi.
Thanks for having us here this evening. We won't take much of your time, but we're from the women's, I mean, the Amory Women's Club, and I'm Sue Kugler, one of the co-presidents, and I have with me Brooke Whitley, as most of you may know, and Pam Elkin, and we're here to present to you a contribution to Your Angel Fund. Children are one of the key factors that we focus on in all of the fundraising and the different types of programs we like to provide and support. We have reading programs in the school, and both for Read Across America and also for Earth Day, we help share some programming with the teachers at the elementary school. So don't know if you've heard of those programs, but our children are very important to us, and we know their education is their future in ours, and we want to be sure there aren't things going on that distract them from being able to learn in your environment. And so we would like to provide you with a donation of $5,000 to Your Angel Fund for the whole school district. Thank you.
Could we get someone here to accept?
Sure. Do you want to do that? Char, Sean?
Yeah.
Make a big splash.
Well, we like that. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, and thanks for taking your time to come here tonight to do that. That really means a lot, and you're right. That goes a long way in helping with barriers of education and for kids that face struggles that we just don't know what they're facing, and it really makes a huge difference, and so that's really appreciated. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. Okay, well, it's pretty hard to follow that, but with some vouchers and some consent agenda items, but who had those?
I had the consent agenda items, so I would make a motion we approve those as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed, please signify by saying no.
No.
Okay. Motion passes to accept the consent agenda items as presented on a 4-1 vote. With that, we'll move along with administrator reports.
Okay, at the high school, the last four weeks, we've had band concerts, choir concerts, and more band concerts and choir concerts and jazz band concerts. We've also done a practice ACT test day for our ninth through 11th graders, putting a lot of extra work in on that. Coming up, we've got the big band trip to Florida after Christmas. We've got an honors band concert January 13th, and then our semester break starting on January 17th. Hard to believe the first semester will be over already.
Okay, at the middle school, we are in the middle of the band concert season two, and we just had a concert where the cadet band performed with the high school, and I suppose I'll stick to the agenda. So with boys' basketball, so we have, that one looks different than what I have up there. I'm not sure. But so we're kicking off our project-based learning now with Genius Hour, and we'll be kicking that off in January. And our committee kind of met and talked about what are some of the project-based learning things, and Genius Hour's been a program that we've run for a couple of years, and the committee felt strongly of running that against. We'll be working with our students on setting up Genius Hour in January. We'll also be working on student goal-setting, and we'll be sitting down with kids as we get into January, as we are in mid-year, and talk about what kind of goals are they setting for themselves, both in school and out of school, to achieve excellence, and so we'll be setting those goals and processing with kids. Storybook Theater kicks off right after we get back from break two, and this year they're doing Goldilocks and the Three Bears. And again, if you've never been to Storybook Theater, what used to be Prairie Fire, it is quite amazing how much those kids can pull off in such a short time, and their performances are amazing. Winter sports coming up, wrestling and girls' basketball. Wrestling just kicked off today, and girls' basketball will be soon, and we'll hopefully see some great things from their teams. We have our winter concert, our winter band and choir concert tomorrow night on December 17th, so we're excited for that. We'll have a Warrior Way celebration on Friday, or Thursday night, at the end of the day, kind of ending the school and the holiday celebrations and things. Fast bridge reading and math scores. We'll be doing some mid-year benchmark testing early January, and that will kind of give us a good indicator of how well our students are progressing in reading and math towards the state and national norms. And then we hit break, so.
All right. Good evening. I will start with a tradition that we do here at the intermediate school, so fourth-grade students visit the Evergreen and Amory Memory Care every other month. Two different classes go, and so they go there and they interact with the residents in both of those facilities. They complete crafts, fun activities, board games, just really socializing. It's really important for us to have a connection to the residences there. And so, for example, today, we did have two classes that went today, and they did some fun holiday crafts. So I always hear really great things from our kids who really enjoy being there, so I'm thankful for that community partnership that we have. Amory Giving Tree, so part of the Secret Santa program that actually supports the students in our district. I'm on that board, and so each year, the intermediate school will sponsor a fairly large family to be able to give back. So I want to follow up and just thank the Secret Santa program. They do a lot for our students and our families in terms of just providing some holiday cheer, and that actually took place this past weekend. The intermediate school is the pickup site for that, and so hopefully, all the community members that sponsored families were able to get their packages in and their gifts, and hopefully, they're with their new families, and there'll be some happy faces during the holiday season. Third grade concert, December 5th. We had our third grade presented a holiday concert, and it was fantastic. Lots of really positive praise. I want to thank Mrs. Henningsgard, as always. She's very talented, and she highlights our students' talent, so that was a fun concert for our students. Report cards, intermediate school report cards went home this past Thursday, so hopefully, parents got ahold of those. And then finally, Act 20. Act 20 is this continuing thing I talked to you about, and so that state mandate actually will be implemented in January as our first required screening. So our Title I team has been very busy working at the intermediate and the elementary schools. Over the last couple weeks, they've piloted several small groups. So there's two different portions that they've had to pilot as a Title I team. There's a part called Test Nav where students will do that on their computer, and then there's another portion of it called the Oral Reading Fluency, where each student has to be screened with different passages that they read out loud. And so our Title I team has piloted both of those sections of the testing at both schools for us to kind of work out our kinks, to talk about pacing, what do we need in terms of time of preparing for our students for that. So we will do that, January 13th and 14th. A little bit longer at the elementary. They need five days here at the intermediate school, because it's just grade three. We will do two days, the 13th and 14th, and then following that, we will analyze the data and then communicate with parents for any student that falls underneath the 25th percentile. So we are well on our way, feeling very good about where we sit as a district with Act 20. We're ready, and we feel it'll benefit our kids when it comes to instruction as well. When we look at upcoming events, we have just our building sing-along, which students love. We usually get a guest appearance from the middle school band, and it's one of our favorite things here for our students. As Mr. Benson talked about, benchmark screening, so ours is Fast Bridge. That's the tool that we use, so that will take place here at the intermediate school, the 6th through the 10th. As I already mentioned, January 13th and 14th will be our Eames Web Plus screening for grade three, and then during our in-service on January 20th, we will look at all of that data and reform our RTI groups for future instruction. Thank you.
Hello. This past month? Oh. Nope, nope, sorry. I was all ready. Go ahead.
Okay. You'll be up soon.
I know.
Lean Elementary School, we are to the last of the last of items at the elementary school. It's called Punch List Time. We're probably 95% home, but there are things like there's a wire hanging out here, there's a nail pop here, or we need to fix the gap between this and that. There's all those types of things. So we have a shared Google Doc form that elementary staff, George and I, work from, and when items get addressed, they get highlighted and they are done. So we are to that point where we're crossing the last items off and spending the last dollars, so to speak. Holiday Family Fun Night. For those who were able to attend, thank you very much. We don't keep records from year to year to year in regards to how many, but we had over 400 kids. I have this incorrect. I found out today. It was almost 450 kids and family members in attendance. That was on Thursday, the 5th. There was lots of games, crafts, cookies, et cetera. It was a very, very good event, and it was staffed by our elementary staff and many of their children, and led by Gina Arntz, Office Secretary. She did a fantastic job. We also have a Christmas sing-along at the elementary school, and we are going to get a visit from the middle school cadet band. That happens this Friday in the afternoon. Shannon Henningsgard is our point person. We'll be in the gymnasium, and it will be, I'm sure, a very festive event. And Jessica Stole My Thunder on Act 20, but Elementary is doing some Act 20 as well, if not a lot of it. So ditto to what Jessica said in regards to our preparedness for that, because our timetable and our deadlines are the same as what she's already articulated. Abby, you're up.
Sorry about that.
Nope, that's okay.
I was just so excited, I guess. Do you want to talk about those?
Oh, yes. Well, we have Holiday Sing Along. We have Storybook Theater. That's happening just after the break. We have Amazing Animals. That's a presentation for first grade. Then we have a teacher in-service, and then Family Reading Night is on the 23rd. Now you're up.
Okay. This past month, I had the ability to go to CISA 11, and we attended some training on 504 and making sure we're compliant. In part of my position, I not only oversee students supported by an IEP, but students supported by a 504 plan, and making sure we're being compliant with identifying students who may have a disability, and then making sure we're giving them accommodations and support through a 504 if they qualify for that. And then it was a lawyer presenting, so then they continued to talk to us about what does open enrollment look like with students supported by an IEP plan and if we have openings. So it was super helpful just making sure we're getting more aligned for what we need to be doing for that. And then, so work that has been done in our district was around the equitable, multi-level systems of support prior to me coming, and that's been continued support from our People's Services team that has trickled down to every building. This is our, you know, wheel of support for all students in academics and behavior and emotional learning. And so I met with our CISA coach, that she came in and met with me so that I could kind of get up to speed on what that looks like here in Amory, and that was super helpful, and then she's going to continue to work with myself and our People's Services team just to continue that work in our district. And then I just wanted to take a moment and give out a shout-out to the special ed staff over at the elementary. They've done a fantastic job. We have had quite a few new students move into the elementary, which is always a great thing, but they've needed to adjust and pivot and change and readjust again, and they've just done a really good job loving those kids up and getting them started on the right foot at the elementary. So huge shout-out to them.
Thank you. Okay, Abby, we're just gonna keep cruising with you.
All right.
And we have the 2023-2024 Pupil Non-Discrimination and Education Equity Report.
Yep. So this is a report that DPI requires every district to submit every year, and you can see by January 31st. And what it does, it asks us to collect the number of reports that were made throughout the district in the areas of discrimination and harassment based on the different categories. And you can see, we have had zero reports of discrimination based on any of the categories, so that's great news. And then, this is based off of last year's school year, so the numbers, and I want to be cautious, because some of these numbers can represent, an event can represent more than one of these numbers, because it can kind of hit a couple categories at the same time, but we have to count them separately. So you can see the numbers that were reported. We have to report whether or not they were resolved formally or informally, and we have all informal resolutions. Formally would mean like if we had to have Civil Rights, Office of Civil Rights involved, police, or DPI involved in helping us resolve them, and the buildings did not. They resolved them within their buildings and their disciplinary measures and processes that they used. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Abby. All right, and then off to informational items, and we have the school board election coming up April 1st, 2025. Dr. Duffler.
The school board election, April 1st, 2025. The following school board offices are to be elected to succeed the present incumbents listed. Two positions at large, Dale Johnson, Jill Veerkant. Office term is April 28th of 2025, expiring April 23rd, 2028. A description of school district boundaries can be obtained from the school district office. Four candidates, a campaign registration statement and declaration of candidacy must be filed no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, here in the school district office with the clerk located at 543 Minneapolis Avenue South, Amory, Wisconsin, 54001. If a primary is necessary, the primary will be held on Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, and this is done in the city of Amory on November 26th, 2024, signed by District Clerk Dale Johnson.
Okay. Pretty straightforward. And district and school report cards.
Okay, I'll bet lead off on the presentation, and then we'll run right down the row. Remember, there's no elementary data to report here. There is no standardized test that goes with elementary, so there's no elementary piece to this puzzle, and there isn't a scorecard for People's Services or Student Services either. So it's the building principles that you see here with us. The first few, half dozen or so, slides reflect the district report card, and on the first slide that you see on the screen, the areas of measurement, if you will, are student achievement, growth, target group outcomes, and on track for graduation. Those are the criteria. Those are the benchmarks, if you will. So on the report card, which reflects the 2023-2024 school year, you'll note our rating was 72.2, which exceeds expectations. There have been 13 years that we've done a scorecard. Only 10 of those years, there's been a scorecard for the district. Three of those years, I just didn't have a district card. Two of those years, I had it for nobody, COVID being one of those. So all 10 of the years that we've had a district report card, we have exceeded expectations. In the area of achievement, the areas where they highlight are English Language Arts and Math. You'll see the red represents Amory throughout, and the gray represents the state of Wisconsin, and you'll see the red bar goes further to the right than the state bar, and it's pretty self-explanatory for 2022-2023, and then for the last year, 23-24, that's true of English Language Arts and Math. On the next slide, you'll see growth. Growth is you take a particular group of students and move them forward over the time that you have them, and you'll see for growth in English Language Arts, we surpassed the state in 22-23. We were near the state in 23-24, and for math, we were ahead last year, and we were right at the state in the past year. On track for graduation on the next slide, again, red is Amory and gray is state. You'll see the four areas on the district report card. They spend their time calculating our numbers on our eighth grade math, third grade ELA, graduation, and absenteeism, and I am here to report that we are ahead of the state in all four of those criteria. So that encapsulates the district report card. Then there's a report card for each building. Do you have any questions for me? Because if we get all the way to the end, you might lose your train of thought as to what you wanted to ask. Okay, Josh, you're up.
We'll go to the high school. Score, very similar to where we were last year, at 50.7. If you look at the achievement score for English Language Arts and Math, you'll see that we are above the state average in both of those categories when it comes to achievement. Of course, the growth score is where we've been struggling. The academic performance over time shows the different categories. The more people you have in the right category, in the green, the better off you're going to be. You'll see that for English Language Arts as well as mathematics on the next slide. Okay. If you go to the next slide, you'll see our, first off, our 11th grade ACT composite, 19.2 last year. State average was 19.3. You can see the English score, where we were a couple tenths above the state average, and then in math, just a couple tenths below, and the same thing with reading. The ninth and 10th grade scores, you'll see that for ELA, we were approximately 14 points above the state average, and for math, a little bit higher than that, 15 points above the state average. In math, our ninth and 10th graders take the same exact test. Okay. In terms of the highlights, our ninth graders were first place in the conference in ACT composite score. So that was a great thing. Our overall achievement score was in the top 59% of the state. We were 15th out of 39 schools in the CISA. The number one report card in Polk County, the number one high school, our achievement score was 10 points higher than the number one report card school in Polk County. Just throwing that out there. Our below basic category, or the lowest category that you could be in, had a 12% decrease, meaning those kids went from the lowest category up to the next category. So that was, that was one positive that came from this. And I'll just point out that the scorecard doesn't measure all the wonderful things that are just footnotes on the back of the report card, such as number of kids in CTE programs, dual enrollment credits, workplace experiences. All those things are highlighted on the last page of the report card, but there's no points given out for any of those things, arts, music, et cetera. In terms of the action plan, we continue to identify target group students in English Language Arts and Math from the 2023 assessments. We've got some new toys and tools to help us compare data points. We're using a program called CERT for our new ACT test prep, and we really dove headfirst into that. It's giving us some of the best data we've ever gotten, far more valuable than what we actually get from ACT, because they kind of, they show you the results, but they don't really show you where you are doing well, and the test is kind of like Fort Knox. You know, they just don't let you see anything. So this has been pretty useful, assuming that it's a reliable test. Some other things, we've got a lot of students that are starting out in pre-algebra this year that'll take algebra as well, so doubling up at lower grade levels. I'm going to be a test proctor for the first time with select students. We hope that that might be a motivating factor. As was the case last year, the bottom three middle schools in the Middle Border Conference had the three highest report cards in the high school, and vice versa, the three highest middle schools were the three lowest high school on the report card with that formula that exists. This new program, CERT, we've got the kids taking three practice tests. They've already taken one. We've got a second one that they'll be doing embedded in their classes in January. They'll be taking a third test in late February, and then the actual ACT day for juniors is March 11th. For the ninth and 10th graders, it'll be April, and hopefully, by then, all the kids in the school don't hate me for having them take all these extra practice tests. So do you guys have any questions?
That was gonna be actually one of my, one of my questions. Do we test too much?
Well, we're gonna find out after this year.
Okay.
So last year, we were a one-and-done practice test with a boot camp day, so we'll have some comparison data next year. There's other factors that go into it. The other thing we're gonna do is we're just gonna ask the kids for their honest reflection. The nice thing about this program is the kids can have some independent time. So the kids that are intrinsically motivated, they have access to this program, and there's tons of practice quizzes and materials in there. So it's a really great tool for those kids. So we'll see, we'll see what happens.
I would like to answer that question a little bit, though. I think we assess our kids a lot, and I think a lot of times people don't realize when you come forward with a specific test that you're requiring the school to do, how much time it takes. So some of these tests take an entire week. Well, that's a week that you're really missing a lot of instruction. But the biggest factor right now is what Act 20 is doing. So Act 20 is a brand-new law. Jessica can speak to it a lot better than I can, but this law specifically is brand-new, and it's requiring almost a duplicate of what we're already doing to try and, you know, assess every single one of those kids and then have individual plans and the deadlines and everything, and the timelines that they set it up is really, really problematic. And so to kind of give an example, it's taking like title kids out, or titles instructors out that have to do these required things, and you're missing weeks of time for the kids that need it the most. So sometimes I do feel we have to be really careful when we're mandating all of these expectations on it without really realizing how it's gonna play out for those kids in the trenches. And maybe you can talk about that, but later. I just, that was a, it is an issue that we definitely talk about a lot. So at the middle school, our scorecard came in at 92.6, which is a score of significantly exceeding expectations. We've exceeded, we've either exceeded expectations or significantly exceeded expectations every time there's been a report card. The next slide is how our kids did on the forward exam this year, and, you know, we were hovering between 68% to 82% meets or advanced, which is about 15 to 24 percentage points above the state average. And the Wisconsin forward exam is, that's a one-year number. That shows where those kids performed last year. And then, obviously, those scores then get over into formulas for the state to come out with the state report cards. If you go to the next slide and you look at achievement, that is actually, those numbers represent a three-year average for each school. So if you take a look at 22-23 or 23-24 on where those achievement scores are, that's, 23-24 is a three-year average of the last three years. They wait, they wait the most current year a little higher, and then, so every one of those numbers that you see off the school report card is a three-year average. So our scores came in, and these aren't percentage points. When you look at these scores, these are points, so they're basically taking a look at how many of your kids met advanced or proficient, and you get so many points for that. And so our scores were very solid, about 20 to 24 points above the state. And then the next slide is our growth, and the growth score again is indicating how much did those kids grow over time from the year before. And they set some expected growth. They say that for a student, this is what they should achieve, and then if you either meet it, you get expected growth. If you exceed it, then your kids grew at a higher rate than they said you should get them to grow, and obviously, you can have growth that was below what they expected. So our growth scores were 100 in this year in both reading, language arts, and math, and that's 34, approximately 34 points above the state average in growth. The next slide, that shows that that's that one-year state test broken down and how many of those kids scored, and so in meets or advanced, and that's where you want to get your kids to be at, and then that number comes out with that meeting in advanced percentages that you see often. Some of the highlights, so like I said, we've exceeded or significantly exceeded expectations every year. That score of 92.6 is the ninth highest middle school score in Wisconsin out of 385 schools, which is in the top 2%. We've been in the top 2% to 3% every year recently, and that's the highest middle school score in CISA and in the Middle Border. The growth score in this next slide, I kind of like this slide, because this shows what percentage of schools and where they fell on growth, and so the further to the right you are, the higher your growth score was, and the higher the bar means there's more schools or less schools that achieve that. And so that overall score of 100, we have the highest growth score in math and the highest growth score in English on the same year last year for our students, so we're really, really pleased. Again, that's a three-year average, but on the growth as well. To help you understand a little bit better, so this is a chart, and so if your, if your students in that grade level or that area scored at exactly where they expected you to grow, you'd be right at that center line. So every single step to the right, that means that that group of students exceeded what they said you should. And if you go red to the left, it shows that they didn't exceed. They went less than what they... They went less than what they anticipated you would. But what I like about this is that it doesn't matter if you're a male or a female. It doesn't matter if you're special ed or not. It doesn't matter if you're free and reduced or not. It doesn't matter. Every single kid achieved at, at higher levels than the state said we should. And so that is my, that's what I'm the proudest of, is that our kids and our teachers have really, really, really working hard and are doing a great job. So our plan in the future is to continue to find ways to improve, take a look to move more students to the advanced level as much as we can, to work with staff to evaluate learning, and again, complete a lot of data analysis. We look at student by student, standard by standard. So yeah, we do a lot of testing, but the important thing is if you're gonna do that testing, you really may need to make sure that you're doing your due diligence with it. So we break those, those results down on every kid and make goals for the teachers on what do we need to do with every student? And what, and then work with those students on what can you do to, to continue to grow? And then eventually, our last one is to improve differentiation of instruction. Again, to better offer intervention and things for kids that need more support.
I do wanna make a comment about that, about the growth score, Tom. And I think it's easy to, you know, for people to say, well, meeting a hundred and, and growing is pretty easy if you're bottom of the basement already. But the thing is, you haven't been. Like, you are already high, and then to have kids growing, I think, is a real
Right.
testament to what you're doing there.
But, and just to point out that based off of your school, you're, about a fourth of your score is achievement, about a fourth is growth. I just want to point out that the high school is working really hard and their kids are achieving. But based off the growth scores that we have continually produced, when they get to the high school, it's hard for them to continue to move that on. And like, like Josh said, then you see a, a school report card system that's a little slanted towards, towards the lower levels and a little harder for the, for the high school to maintain that growth. And so we've, we've had discussions with state superintendent and other DEEP guy people, and they acknowledge that that's an issue right now, but they don't have an answer on how they're going to go with that. So this is a shout-out to Josh, because I know that we're gonna argue. How's that?
Thanks, buddy.
Since you brought, just before I move along any further, but since you brought Josh up again, there was something that I had to ask Josh before we moved along there. Would, Josh, if you wanna go back to the, the pre-ACT exam with the ninth and the tenth graders, and then would actually take the ACT of the eleventh grade? And you're looking at that, and it's kind of skewed like our kids did a lot better than the state average in our ninth and tenth grade, but then not so much when we get to the, the ACT? And I think I have a reason, I, I think I know probably the reason for that, but do you have a reason for that?
Oh, you know, the, the strange thing is that group of kids was in tops in the conference when they were in tenth grade. So, you know, you can make a list of reasons why, theories. They're theories, and I, I'm not gonna make excuses.
Sure. Well, I, and I, yeah, certainly not asking for that. I'm just wondering, I'm wondering if when these kids take these tests in ninth and tenth grade, and they're the, the pre-ACT exams, and if they're thinking at that time, they're young, and they're thinking that they're geared towards college at that time, and so there, there's more of a will to do better in those tests versus then by the time they get to maybe their junior year and taking those ACT tests, maybe not so much thinking that they're gonna go on to college and does it matter as much? Is there some of that? Do you, have you heard any of that from the kids?
I can tell you, if you would have answered C and every single question, you probably would have done better than about ten of the kids who took our test last year, which is why I'm a test proctor this year.
I think there were kids that did. I mean, but I just, I just wonder, like, is that, like,
Yeah.
do they do that because they don't see the value for them to, it's not going to be something that they're gonna be in admission to college? Or is there any of that talk? Have we sat down with the kids and really dug into that, what their feelings are?
There are some kids that say, I don't care. This doesn't impact my grades. But, yeah, so the, the job is just to try to explain to them, you know, we need you. Do your best for us, please. Those are the conversations I'll be having.
And then I, and then I wonder, like, do your best for us as the district? But then, but then, that's never our goal, is the district, right? It's the, it's the, the goal of the district is do our best for them.
Some of these kids aren't, some of these kids, you know, especially if they're not going on to, if they're, if they just plan to enter the workforce especially, you know, they think it's pretty pointless.
Right. And I guess that's a, them wondering if we've heard that, and then, yeah.
We have.
And then
But the other, you know, the other area principal's telling me the same thing, too. So they, they get some of this from their kids as well.
Yeah. It's just, it's not for the feather and the district's cap, I guess. It's for the, you know, when we really look at it, what we're doing, it's the district is here for the kids, and so.
Right, yeah. You know, I tell them, you know, our teachers are giving you their best. Please give us your best.
Okay, sorry for the intermission, Josh. Go ahead.
All right. Amory Intermediate School, twenty-three, twenty-four. We continue our achievement of exceeding expectations with a score of seventy-four point eight. The next slide will highlight our forward exams in particular. Again, we, we start the forward exam in grade three, so grades three, four and five. Grades three and five, they complete math and ELA. And then fourth grade completes the science and social studies, which, which you will see there. We continue to be above the state. I'm still on the other one, Becky, sorry. We continue to be above the state by eleven point seven in ELA. Continue to be above the state in math by thirteen point five. We are historically stronger in math. Our trends continue to have high, high scores in math. Math is easier to teach, easier for students to understand at this level. It's concrete. When we talked about COVID and how that remote learning impacted our students, our students who were learning to read took the largest hit in terms of just their academic progress and performance. It is really hard to learn to read, and it's really hard to, to teach kids to learn to read. So that trend of being stronger in math continues to be a trend here at the intermediate school. And then we are historically stronger in math and science. We are a building that devotes an hour each day to math and so, or to science and social studies. And our teachers are very well-versed and very well-equipped to teach science and social studies. And also, science and social studies is very high interest for kids. So any student that maybe is academically struggling in ELA or in math, these two subjects areas seem to grab them. So we definitely capitalize on that. A lot of the reading, actually, that we're doing in science and social studies, we are bridging into ELA as well. When you hit nonfiction with kids, they really, really like that. So we, we capitalize on that, and we continue to be strong in science and social studies as well. As Mr. Benson shared, when you look at the intermediate school report card, there are four different areas that give us our composite score. So for us, in terms of achievement, we are actually weighted less on achievement and more on growth. And there's a complex formula to that. But when looking at our achievement in ELA, I, I had to make sure that I wasn't looking at the wrong report card because the scores are the same, which, which is a great thing. So twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, we scored sixty-eight point nine. Twenty-three, twenty-four, sixty-eight point nine. And then even when you look at math, we continued with a strong seventy-seven. So above the state in both ELA and math in terms of achievement. In growth, when I talk about that four composite average score for us, we are weighted heavily in growth. And again, that is a complex, how, how they get there and how they weigh, that has a lot to do with other external factors. But when we look at our growth, I'm gonna focus on twenty-three, twenty-four. You can see that we made less than hopeful growth when it came to ELA. I can tell you, and, and having Tom highlight that this is a three-year average, this is year two for us of implementing a response to intervention model. So when I talk about RTI time, we have a half hour built into every single grade level that for a half hour, we look at FastBridge data, and we will break kids out into groups based on skill. So we, we, we will find our maybe five to seven learners that struggle with decoding, and they become a decoding group. So we are teaching specifically to the skill that they are, are lacking or that they have a gap in at this moment. So we continue to make efforts there. When we look at math, we've made really great growth above the state average as well. Academic performance over time, so ELA, so this is the groups of kids as, as we see them in terms of developing their skills, approaching the necessary skills meeting, and then advancing. We look at this overall because our goal is to move as many of our students as we can into the next bar graph of color to make sure that they're making their growth. And then you can see for math, focusing on moving our students across the bar graph in color as well. Highlights, the twenty-three, twenty-four report card. We, again, highlight is receiving our rating of exceeds expectations. We have a very strong achievement score where we outscore the state by ten point three and in math by twelve point five. In growth, AIS, we're exceeding the state in math by nine point five, which is same as last year. And then something else to be proud of is our on-track to graduation. So we positively exceed the chronic absenteeism rate, school attendance rate, and the third grade ELA score, which make that composite score, and we have an overall solid score of eighty-nine point eight. When we talk about our action plan here at the intermediate school, I tie it to our big three, which we continue as a district, is our PLC, PBIS and TSS. So when I look at PLCs, we have a forty-five-minute PLC built into every morning. So that's called a professional learning community, and that is where our teachers will meet for forty-five minutes, and they look at the data. They talk about those RTI groups. We talk about how do we move this student and skill set to this one? Do they need to remain in that group? Are they ready to move on? We really, really have it data-driven. Our Title One teachers attend that. Our school counselors attend that. Our special ed staff attend that. So we are all in when we talk about growing all of our students. Using an RTI model is, is very important. That's where I talk about where we look at each kid and we, we break them into what do they need for a tiered intervention? Because every student is, is at a different level of learning than what they need. PBIS, we are a PBIS school, and so we look at their behavior, academic, social and emotional needs. We'll continue to use our second step curriculum. That's a universal tier one where our teachers are using that within their classrooms. And then we also have our trauma-sensitive schools. So just continuing to train our staff on how, you know, how do we support students that have been through trauma? And then how do we incorporate more restorative practices into what we do? So making sure that we have strong relationships with our kids. They feel like they belong and they feel loved here. And that goes on with the second step. Our other action plan, when I look specifically at subject areas, is ELA. We are in year three of HMH Into Reading, so we continue on that alignment. We work with a CISA reading specialist who's been a fantastic support for us. We shifted to writing, which is part of ELA. I wanna focus on improving our growth score in ELA. So again, this is year two of that RTI model. So I, I anticipate after year three and four, we continue to see those gains. We do utilize goal setting on the forward exam and math in ELA for our students here. So they are intrinsically hopefully motivated to, to do well. We do implement RTI groups. We do that with math in ELA. And a big goal in ELA is to train our staff on tier-two support programs. So we're talking about students that need more than just our, our tier-one ELA, of which is HMH Into Reading. We, we've trained staff in programs called Morphine Magic, Top Ten Tools, Letters, Hegarty, Orton Gillingham. Those are really, really strong science of reading-based programs that our teachers now use during those tier-two interventions. When I look at math, this is year two of the new Wisconsin math standards, so we continue with that. Last year, a goal of ours was to focus on math practices. So students are reflecting on how they're solving math problems and math talks. Use of RTI groups, again, that's ELA and math. And then finally, as I mentioned, we set goals for the forward exam in both math and ELA. Any questions?
Very comprehensive.
Thank you.
Again, the left, sorry. The last slide is elementary, stating we don't have an elementary scorecard. We use the intermediate for the elementary scorecard.
Okay. Any other questions for the administrative team on the district report card? All right. Hearing done. We'll move along with staffing projections then by Dr. Dardler.
Okay. What you see on the screen is also in your folders, for those who can't see all the numbers, because they get pretty little when there's a lot of them. The first slide that you'll see are district enrollments. These are real-time numbers from two thousand fourteen, fifteen, all the way through two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. These are Third Friday count numbers. The twenty-four, twenty-five number is data as of December eleventh, which would be what, last week, Wednesday? So those numbers are not Third Friday count. They're slightly different. So you'll see there's a declining enrollment in the school district of Amory moving from left to right. The bottom gray line gives you your overall total count of all kids in-house. The next page, you'll see just the gray made black, I guess is the way to say it, from two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen through the present same timeframe. You'll see a declining enrollment there. Where you get into the next few slides, you'll see two, two different buildings. The elementary school broken into two slides, and then the intermediate school. Let me walk you through this. This is not the exact same timeframe. This goes from two thousand twenty, twenty-one through two thousand twenty-nine, two thousand thirty. Anything beyond this year is an estimate. You don't know that for sure. No one could ever know. It's, it's, it's a guesstimate, to be quite honest with you. Anything in the present year and prior is an actual number. So where you see early childhood moving from left to right, early childhood are kids that are not yet four K. That number has always been very small, typically less than a half dozen. For instance, this present year, we have five. Four K, you'll see from left to right, it says students, then teachers, and then an average. You'll see section sizes where you see teachers. That's section numbers. If you move from left to right in that particular row, you'll see where any kind of deductions are made or reductions are made. If the number reduces, that means there is less instructor at that grade level. And there's a slide at the end that sums it up, if you will. The same is true with kindergarten. The same is true with first grade. Those numbers moving from left to right give you the picture. On the next slide, and we separated into two slides because it just got too small to be able to do it on one slide. You see second grade, third grade. Remember, we do have a slice of third grade at the elementary in the form of Montessori. And that population of students is typically about about fifteen kids. Then overall, you'll see in a grayish color, you'll see total number of students at the elementary, total number of teachers at the elementary, and then a class size moving from left to right. You'll see those numbers as they transpire over that time. And underneath, you'll see what occurred. Is there an addition or is there a subtraction that occurred there? And you'll see the total number of staff for elementary school. If you follow the middle column, overall, teachers, twenty-two point five, moving to the far right. In twenty-four, twenty-five, you're at nineteen. So there's three and a half produced there. Intermediate school is very similar in shape and size, just different numbers in different grades. This is thankfully on just one slide, third, fourth and fifth. And you'll see again, same year, same timeframe. Anything beyond this year is, is truly an estimate. And you'll see real-time numbers this year and prior. Real-time numbers meaning total number of kids in that grade, total number of teachers, and then an average. And you'll see that number when you get down to the bottom. Teachers, total number of teachers, eighteen. And in the present school year, you have seventeen. But what's set to happen for next year, actually, in the elementary and the intermediate school is a reduction of two, based on the number of students that we reduce, sorry, from two eighty-two with a real number, and the approximation is two forty-two next year. When you drop forty, you're probably dropping two section sizes, and that's a reduction of two staff. To be determined. Don't know who and don't know exactly where, but likely in fifth grade because we drop off a larger number in fifth grade. The last slide I have for you sort of sums it up, if you will. The elementary teaching staff and elementary students are in that reddish color, pinkish color. You're moving from twenty-two point five in two thousand twenty, twenty-one to seventeen in two thousand twenty, twenty-six. That's a reduction of five and a half teaching staff. That's in most cases via natural attrition. Someone retires and you don't replace them. That's an approximate reduction of eighty students. We can't know that for certain because the number at the far right there is a two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six number. We don't know that. It's an estimation. Intermediate school staff, you're moving from eighteen to fifteen with a, a reduction of about fifty-eight students. So the total number of staff that have been reduced in the school district of Amory over the course of five years is eight and a half if you go through the end of next year. It's four and a half if you go through this year. So those are the numbers as we see them and know them right now. And I'll take any questions if you may have them.
What was the Third Fridays count for children?
For which year?
For this year, this current year.
I don't have the Third Friday count on you. We have the actual number of two thousand twenty-fourth, twenty-five, but I bet John can get us the actual number. But it's twelve sixty-six as of last week Wednesday.
Twelve sixty-six. But every other one of these But every other one of these is the Third Friday count?
Yes. Unless it's anything moving beyond into the future, then we don't know those.
So, I guess one of the question, you know, obviously the main reason why I was asking for this, this projection, was to make sure that there's going to be a dance between our balance between education, the ability to educate well versus what we can afford to educate, how we can afford to pay our teachers, right? And budgeting. That's why I asked for this, because I'm obviously concerned about our budget in the long-term here with a declining enrollment. And it's just a trend of declining enrollment for how many years? So, since I left school. So, I really just wanted to bring this up of, you know, and again, if we're averaging student to, I mean, are we roughly around 14 to 17 kids even looking further?
Yes, but I want to correct one thing first. If you look at the second slide, Becky, if you could cue that back up, 2014-15 through 2019-20, the 2019-20 number is actually bigger than the 14-15 number. So, there hasn't been declining enrollment until the last five years. But within the last five years, there has, and there has been attrition of teachers over that time, eight and a half if you go through next year. And that is a budgetary impact. If you have eight and a half teachers times salary times insurance, you can call each teacher somewhere between $75,000 and $100,000. Yes, you're going to receive less per pupil aid, because you have less pupils. You're removing about $1 million in the budget if you did eight and a half teachers total. And you're removing them each and every year, not just once.
Yeah, we talked about that, and it's, I mean, it's 11,000 per child, right?
11,742.
I like that about you. Yeah, really, the difference is, is we're talking about the difference between 1,500 kids to now 1,266 and going down. So, I guess that's the question I wanted to bring to this board, is this something that, again, in the future is feasible? Is something that can be budgeted and continue? Is 14 to 17 going to be a culture that, again, every teacher's going to have and expect to just, that's what we're going to educate in the classroom? And again, overall, can we afford it? You know, can we provide the best education for the money that we can pay? That's really why I wanted to see this, and again, why, I mean, obviously, I want to see natural attrition rather than any forced attrition.
For next year, it will likely be forced attrition unless we have strategic retirements, but I don't know who's retiring. I mean, if you're going to reduce to, and if you don't have retirements, the only other way for it to be done is a non-renewal. There's really three categories, resignation and non-renewal and retirement. So, it would have to be forced. And if it's not forced, then it's just not going to be a reduction. Because if you don't have retirements, you don't have retirements. I don't know who's going. The deadline's March 1st on that.
And so, I guess, what, so we did this, and I guess we've kind of talked about this before. We've talked about what we can afford, who we can afford. We've had some attrition of staff members. We're looking at doing that again. So, is your question, like, do we need to raise class sizes? Are we, what is your question?
Well, no, my, it's my concern is that we, because if we don't raise, I'm worried that, yes, we, I don't want people to come to Amory, especially teachers, to come to Amory and think that they're going to lose their job ever. I want for us to be a stable environment, which they can, don't have to worry about that stress. I, again, I want there to be that delicate dance that we're able to use the taxpayer dollar as responsible as we possibly can, but also, again, provide the best education. So, that's why I'm saying, again, is are we talking about 14 to 17 kids, when, again, it was just different maybe when I was younger, when we had 24-plus kids in a classroom? And again, can that even work with the resources that have to be provided with the difference of education now?
I think Jess can answer that.
Well, I can run, I ran the numbers on 24 kids per class for elementary and intermediate school. Do you want me to go through those? I don't have a slide prepared. But if it's 24 kids per class in elementary, that's seven cuts, not two. If you do 24 kids per class at the intermediate school, that's six cuts, not two. So, that's 13 as opposed to four, just teaching staff. That's probably an additional about 10 paras. And if you ran those cuts at the middle school, that's probably an additional four to six cuts. You're looking at about 20 teachers being cut for next year, if it's 24.
They'd be looking for natural attrition, too, because they're
I don't know how that would happen.
With a bunch of paperwork.
That would be, that'd be a lot of teachers.
And the needs of the students, it would be really hard for those teachers to add that many more students to their classes. Is that fair or not?
Each fall, I usually ask CISA to run a survey, so I know where we sit in terms of class sizes. I will say they obviously pull from our CISA, so schools are very different from us, or schools are very similar from us. The bigger schools have slightly bigger classes than us, but I will say there's a caveat if they have behavioral interventionists, academic interventionists, behavior coaches, and academic coaches. And so, those look different. We don't have any of those on our staff. So, while their classes may sit several students higher than us, they do have multiple resources that we don't have at this moment.
So, and again, the first thing we need to look at is ourself, and that's why I'm asking about this. Because, or else we're going to continue to go, well, again, let's look at the taxpayer. Should we ask, should we do a referendum just to pay our own teachers? You know, I think that's a shame. Should we, again, taxes are going to have to go up. Well, I think everybody after this, next year, when you see your property taxes going up due to the reassessment, due to the totality of circumstances, not, there's beyond our issues, we're all going to be extremely frustrated. So, if we can look at ourselves and try to figure out our own issues first, are you, are each, are each one, are you okay with 14 to 17 students per teacher?
If that's what it takes to teach these kids, absolutely.
Are you okay with 24?
I am.
Really?
You should ask the teachers.
If that's what it takes to teach these kids?
With 30 cuts?
Well, that's the thing. Why are we talking, why are you talking like this is a crisis right now? Do we need to do it?
If it's 24 for next year, we would.
Are we not going to make budget?
No, absolutely. We're fine on budget if we do the cuts that are proposed here. 30 cuts is simply a reflection of 24 kids per class.
Okay.
And I didn't create that number, that was simply brought up.
This absolute crazy misunderstanding right now. My point is, is at some point, you're, we're going to run out of some funding. Unless the state jumps in, which I don't see it occurring.
Well, I think you're making an assumption that people here don't know how to manage.
Unless taxes go up, I'm seeing.
No, I think you're making an assumption they don't know how to manage. They're making adjustments, they're seeing the numbers, they're having conversations, they're planning for the future. So, yeah, things can be difficult, but that's, that's business, that's life, man. Let the leaders do their job.
Continue to give the normal, again, we didn't even, we didn't really even give a good raise to our subs last month. We didn't probably even give a substantial raise to our teachers last year. And now, you want us to continue to give raises, but we're, at some point, you're going to run out of funding, buddy. Whether or not we can plan all day, we're going to need more funding.
But I think you're also making an assumption that you can just put more kids in a room together, and everybody's going to learn at the same level we're learning today. I don't think you can do it, not without extra resources.
Hey, and at some point, that's the dance I'm talking about.
Yeah, let leadership do their job.
Well, I think you're going to find it out and budget at some point in the future, whether you like to argue about this or not.
I don't like to argue about it. I think that we've got competent people in positions of leadership, and I trust their ability to do what they need to do.
Well, I hope the taxpayers are listening to this.
So, I think instead of just, like, I think maybe there is some miscommunication, maybe because you haven't, like, so what you're saying is that you don't want teachers to come here and think that they're going to lose their jobs to cuts because we can't afford them, right? So, are you, like, suggesting that we make the cuts now and increase the class sizes now? Or we just do that over a period of time? Because if we're going to make cuts now, then that would kind of go against that kind of philosophy. Or are we thinking that we just, over the period of time, that we pare these down to, like, a higher number of kids per classroom?
No, like I said, and I've been talking about this since I got on this board almost three years ago. Again, I'm worried about our budget at some point, and I sure hope the rest of you are. And again, if you were, at some point, we're going to have to get serious about a staff-to-student ratio, whether, and again, if you're telling me that 14 is the perfect number, I'm in disagreement with you. And I think we need to work, we need to work something else out.
Yeah, I don't, I guess I've sat through, I don't know, six or seven maybe of these now, probably six. Dale, you've sat through far more than I have, and I know that we went through the staffing projections a couple of years ago. I think you were very new at that time, that was your first year. And we said that we, you had a graph that you showed us what that would look like with people projected retiring, because I think the actual words that you said was that if we were going to have, like, a section of 14 or 15 kids, that that wasn't sustainable and nobody would, that would be very hard to justify on taxpayers' dollars. So, I do remember that conversation happening, which then I think that Sean has done a really good job of doing that. I think our last leader did not do a good job of that as well. Dale, you were here for more of that than I was, staff projections, that's we went to a new pay scale there.
Yeah, there was some changes. But recently, I, we have never talked about, recently, about not making budget. I don't, and
Sorry. No, I don't want to interrupt you at all, sorry.
Well, so, yeah, I don't remember any recent conversations about not making budget. Is declining enrollment a concern? Yes, absolutely. But we have people, we've been tracking this. I mean, we, this isn't a surprise, right? I mean, we know that the number of students has been on the decline, and so I don't think this comes as a surprise. We look at our staffing numbers, and, you know, we hope we try to handle this through attrition. You know, if we had a magic ball with whom may or may not retire this year, we could probably have a better answer right now, but we don't. I think that'll come in the next, you know, four months, three, four months. So, I think this is something to be aware of, absolutely, but I don't think the sky's falling today.
Neither do I.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to just add really quickly, you know, and I don't know what my predecessor's level of comfortability on sharing the Baird Forecast modeling with people, and being able to actually properly teach people kind of what they're looking at and how they're looking at it, and the insane amount of data that goes into those calculations and what those forecasting things are. The hard part with looking at next year's budget from a real, true, finite detail right now, and in fact, the next two years, is we're in biennial cycle right now, and it's just kicking off. So, the governor hasn't released his education ask yet, DPI hasn't asked. And I know that they're going to come with something big. They're not going to come for $325. They did that the last time. They're going to go for something bigger. We don't know what the US Department of Education's going to look like. We don't know what our federal funding's going to look like and all those types of things. The good news is, is that our Baird Forecast model, we have the opportunity to actually look and forecast all of those different things. Now, right now, we only purchase one seat, more is what, the way that they kind of word it, which is for me. But we can look at potentially getting seats for additional board members, if you guys wanted to play around with that and look at all of these different scenarios. I would just caution that it's just, it's too early to talk about anything definitive for next year, because we, our annual reports were just due on Sunday. So, they haven't even started to compound the data yet. But I would be more than happy to share that information with you guys at a future board meeting.
Is there more discussion here? Is there a proposal that you have moving forward with this information?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And moving on to the transportation of homeschooled students. Joe, you're up.
I was going to ask Sean go over the next two surveys first. I seen that he put quite a bit of time into the CISA survey and the transportation of
Well, the CISA 11 survey was done by CISA. I simply passed the question on to Kim Robel at CISA 11. There are 39 districts in CISA 11. I don't know that I've ever seen a survey where everyone responded. In this case, the Homeschool Transportation Survey, 25 of 39 responded. It's in your board packet, if you're, or your red folder, if you're looking for what I'm looking at. There were 25 respondents. Two of the 25 districts indicated that they provided transportation for homeschool students, but the description there, it's not actually two, it's a little different than that. One provided a student for one student for a first-period class who lived on a bus route. And the other doesn't provide transportation for students, they provide gas cards to homeschooled families who do have a student that is transported to school. So, they physically don't pick them up and drop them off, they give them gas cards to compensate for that expense, if you will. So, that's the survey for the schools that you see here, up to and including us. And if you have any questions about that survey, I will do my best to answer.
I don't, I think the next one is the legal opinion is Weld Riley.
So, Weld Riley was asked to author a legal opinion. The legal opinion was authored by Sven Stratz from Weld Riley. Without reading it to you verbatim, and I believe you've already read it and seen it, the first section of the legal opinion, it states that what a course options program is, the legal authority to have a homeschool student take a class in a public school environment, that what he has there is the underpinnings of how that occurs, it's been referred to as course options in common nomenclature. The second portion states there's nothing in state statute, in DPI language, in any language anywhere, that obligates a school board to transport students. And it's actually the opinion, when we submitted the question to the Department of Public Instruction, the paragraph response we got back simply states you can, or you can't, that's your decision, which is actually, according to Sven Stratz, our attorney, not accurate. The paragraph that is most relevant is the paragraph that talks about the ability of a school board to provide transportation or not provide transportation for a homeschool student. And the legal opinion of Sven Stratz said, well, Weld Riley is, you don't have the authority to do it. It's not your choice. And that's what he has authored here. And then he went on to talk about what some districts are doing, and he made reference to actual some, some districts, and policies in those districts. And the policy that you see 425 is a policy that is an offshoot of this guidance, and that policy speaks to the participation of non-public school students in district courses and programs. And you can entertain that however you see fit. So, that's in summary form what was authored here.
So, I had the opportunity to look at this, and I'll be honest with you, if I would have known you were going to go to the attorney, I would have really tried to end this a lot quicker. Just again, I'm not here speaking for all homeschool peoples or anything like that, but I wanted to bring up some of my own issues. First of all, I was like, again, if we could have an opportunity to have an absolutely awesome communication, an event over this, where I could prove to you and make all of you decide and give you the best argument to do this. And you were like, absolutely, you know what, Joe just hit it out of the park. But then, the next thing you're going to read is, again, that policy 425. And Sean, would you just do me a favor and read the last paragraph of policy 425?
It states, "Non-public school students participating in public school courses and programs under this policy shall be responsible for their own transportation under this policy shall be responsible for their own transportation to and from the public school, except as otherwise required by law."
So I could've been perfect, and I could've had all of your hearts and minds won you over, and you were gonna end up, you were gonna end up saying, you know what, why don't we transport some of these kids to their first and last class home, whatever? And at the end here, they would, we would've been reading the next policy, and it would've been, no, never mind. Do you have an ability to go on the school policy right now? Can we look at a school policy? Yeah, four, four twenty.
Four twenty?
School admissions guidelines? And Jonathan, the other thing I was looking up to when I was trying to, to look up the total amount of kids. So I know I went on DPI and that website. Bless you. Bless all of you, whoever looks at that website. Um, so I ended up having to go on that Wise Dash and figure out, it was rough. So, um, I was able to figure out that we had, uh, in two thousand, the year of twenty-two to twenty-three is the year we go off of for, uh, public transportation data. And that year, we had one thousand three hundred and ninety-seven students. Can you tell me why we gave the public transportation, we gave DPI, we told them that we transported one thousand five hundred and sixty-three children?
The, the transportation pupil count works differently than the actual third Friday pupil count. And I, I wouldn't be able to speak to that. Um, I, I would love to bring it up, but the Wise Dashboard is currently crashed. So it's.
Good.
Freezing my computer, so I can't even look at what you're, you're talking about.
But it's, but it's based off the number of kids that ride the bus, and not every kid who comes to school rides the bus.
Well, and, and, yeah, there, there's additional.
There's also summer school.
There's summer school, there's early childhood, there's, you know.
What year was that, Joe?
So I looked it up, and it said, it was the twenty-three, twenty-four year based on the twenty-two, twenty-three pupil transportation data from DPI. And it said, we, during that year, we had a student enrollment of one thousand three hundred and ninety-seven, but we gave the data for pupil transportation data of one thousand five hundred and.
That's obviously summer school, and the summer school is, is coded differently.
And if that was a year that we had those, the Warrior Welcome Day, we counted those students.
The first day of school was technically the last day of summer school, so they were coded differently.
So that may account for a higher number that year? I don't remember what year we dropped that.
Okay, so the next one, if you were to go back to the policy and you were to go to the rule, four twenty dash rule.
Oh, the, with the rule?
Yeah. There's gonna be a part here, and this is where I wanted to spring up again. I don't, I don't wanna waste any more time on this. But if you go down to, if you read this part, and I was reading a whole bunch of policies, 'cause that's what I do. Go down to number six. So it's, again, it's really similar, but it says, "Transportation will be the responsibility of the parent guardian unless there is an existing bus route to that student's residence." And I don't doubt we're gonna like change, change the bus route after this, but, but like, I mean, maybe we missed this one. And I would say too, this also just muddies the waters in regards to the policies that were, you have some, whether it's the, the new ones, the ones you wanna update now, or it's the brand new one that you wanna implement, that you're gonna read next. Our current school admission guidelines in itself, this four twenty and this rule, doesn't coincide specifically in regards to the next policy readings that we're gonna talk about. So, do you have any opinion on four twenty rule dash six?
I just, I'm curious, Joe, if they're referring to the fact that there are some homeschooling families that choose to homeschool one child and not another. And so if I were coming to pick up the one student that does attend the public school, that's one possibility. And how I would probably read that.
Again, I, I'll be honest, I appreciate the work that went into it, and I think we've spent way too much money into this, and I'd like to end it and move on.
And so basically, what our attorney's, um, legal opinion was here is that, um, the school district cannot provide transportation for homeschooled students, correct? Because they're not the student of the district, is that correct?
No, that's not technically correct. I talked to Sven Stratz today. I should get on mic. That is not correct. I talked to Sven Stratz today. It says, "You don't have the authority to make the decision." Then I asked him the question, "Why?" And he said, "Because you're a common school district, common and unified school districts." Again, we are a common school district, don't have the, don't have the authority to do that. And then I asked another follow-up, "Why don't they have the authority to do that?" And he said, "That's up to the state legislature, and I have no idea what their logic behind that was, so I can't answer that question." That's not in state statute, their reasoning isn't a state statute. He's simply saying, "You don't have the authority to make that decision."
So without authority to do that, we really can't do anything? And maybe that this rule, the four twenty rule, maybe that needs to be looked at and updated, that we need to take that just completely out of, out of that policy?
If that's what you see fit, certainly. I wasn't prepared to speak about four twenty, but if that's what you wanna do, put on the agenda for next time.
I, I think it needs to be evaluated, uh, because actually, um, well, let's just go to the next one, and I'll tell you what I think about the next reading.
Go to the next agenda item, is that what you're asking for, or the, like, the next policy?
Yeah, the first reading of the, uh, new policy.
Okay. So that would be policy four twenty-five, participation of non-public school students in district courses and programs. Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, ma'am.
Kidokai?
This policy was a policy recommendation from Sven Stratz, uh, grabbed from another district, and it is largely the same as that policy in most school systems that are WASB. It's titled four twenty-four, but we already had a four twenty-four, so that ends up, how it ends up being four twenty-five. This spells out what is course options. It breaks it down by private school student, home-based, private educational student, and non-public school student in general. And then it speaks about the specifics you need to have in order to be able to be a part of that program. You are subject to the same rules and guidelines, attendance and grades and so forth. Um, then it talks about the ability of, in the second to last paragraph, "Parents and guardians of non-public school students participating, they're expected to let us know that they're doing that, so we know that they're doing that." There are five students presently availing themselves of this option at the end of this, this semester. In January, it'll be four. And then the last, um, paragraph that I, I read a few minutes ago.
Okay, so do you have discussion about that then?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to look at this, and it's, it's absolutely poorly written. Uh, first of all, there's a huge difference between may and shall and legal. Um, a may is an option, a shall as you will. And he has a lot of mayes in this, and he should've caught that.
He didn't write this.
Okay, well, this is, this is not okay. That makes a really big difference in, in when we're putting this in a policy. And again, even if you look at Wisconsin State Statute one eighteen dash fifty-three, uh, and, I mean, you can pull it up if you'd like to pull it up, you're actually missing some of the law in the policy, especially in regards to the high school. They don't have to meet standards. In fact, they, you still have to, you shall offer them two classes, or two courses. Um, and that's the other thing too, I have a question in regards to verbiage. Is the, is a course the same thing as a program? You know, can I, can we send a kid to school for math and science, but then not for wrestling and FFA? So is there, or is it only two things and not something else? So again, I, because on the bottom here, you just, you just read it a little bit ago. Courses and programs. I think we really need to be cautious on how we write this. Uh, again, you'd hate to discriminate, right? We're all against discrimination here. So again, when you're, when we're, let's follow the law. Let's have this, if you're, if we're gonna put this policy into place, and if this is written in other districts, good luck to them, I'd hate to see this in our district.
This was written by WASB, would be my suspicion.
Yeah, I, I'm not even an attorney. Um, but again, when you look at, when you look at the law itself, under Wisconsin State Statute, anybody, one eighteen dash dot five-three, it, it doesn't even adhere to it. It's close, but it's missing some really important things.
And what, what are we, I, I'm not sure that it, like, that you have to include what the Wisconsin statute is in your policy? That's why it's there as a reference, that you don't have to include the statute in your policy? Uh, it's just that it references, and that's what the policy is based off of. What are we missing that you feel would need to be included in the policy that's not?
Uh, well, would be two M. And if you, again, you wanna bring up one eighteen, point five-three, Wisconsin State Statute.
Do you have it written down, or what your, what your proposal is here?
This is just informational. I want you to understand that this isn't a close to a, I wouldn't even want this read today.
Well, but this is a first reading, and that's why we do this, is a first reading so that we can make the changes now, so that we can come back and do the second reading, so that we can adopt the policy. So what I'm asking is, do you feel that this isn't, I mean, we're, at some point, we're gonna have to do a first reading and talking about it. That's why we're doing it in an open session.
Okay, well, well then again, this first reading, again, doesn't coincide with your four twenty rule on top of this, so.
Yep, and we've discussed that.
Get into, to how it doesn't coincide. Again, at least the four twenty rule in regards to homeschool students does at least have the shells. But.
So where is it specifically you'd like to see the, uh, may replaced with a shall? Because if, if I'm looking at the, right, at number one, a private school student shall take up, it says may, take up to two high school courses. You can't have shall there, because it's not, you're not, we're not ordering homeschool students to take courses here. So that's a may, that needs to stay, right?
Well, no, I, I, again, I, this, I think this is a point where you actually have an attorney. If we're gonna, if we're gonna play the games of legal, and again, I can look right now on Wisconsin State Statute and see that this draft doesn't coincide with the law, and I sure hope our policies and procedures coincide with law.
And that's what I'm asking, could you tell us what you found that you think that disagrees, so that we can make the policy changes? This is literally just a first reading.
Okay, do you just, I mean, if you just pull it, you can just read it right for yourself, right there. I mean, do you want me to read it verbatim for you?
I want you to tell me what you would like to see changed, that you see the discrepancies of the policy. Yes, 'cause I cannot read that, I'm sorry, even with new glasses, I cannot read that.
Okay, one is in this section, one, parent, parent one. In this section, "Course" means a study which has the fundamental purposes of developing the knowledge, concepts, and skills in a subject. Parent two, "In addition to the standards for admission under statutes one eighteen fourteen, one eighteen one forty-five, parent one, one twenty, point one-two, parent twenty-five, the school board of a district shall determine the minimum standards for admission to a course offered by the school district and grades kindergarten to eighth." Parent two M, "The school board shall allow a pupil enrolled in a home-based, private educational program who has not yet the minimum standards for admission into high school under state statute one eighteen one forty-five, parent one, to attend up to two courses at the public school in the, the district during each school semester if the school board determines that the, that pupil qualifies for admission to those courses, and if there is sufficient space in the classroom." That one's not even in there. Three, "The school board shall allow a pupil enrolled in a home-based, private educational program who has not the standards for admission under sub, parent two, to attend up to two courses at a public school in the district during each school semester if the school board determines that there is sufficient space in the classroom." And again, hence why I wanted to bring up, and I thought it was a very unique subject in regards to the, how many kids are in a classroom.
What Joe is reading is actually at the bottom of Sven Stratz's, uh, legal opinion, bottom of page one, top of page two, if you wanna follow along.
Yeah.
And parent four, "A pupil enrolled in a home-based, private educational program and attending a public school under this section may attend one course in each of two school districts, but may not attend more than two courses in any semester."
So my, my suspicion is, the reason that it's noted at the bottom of the page in the policy, it's cross-referenced, so in fact, someone wanted to know the statutory basis, you would simply refer to this statute, rather than it all being in the policy. Because if you have all of the statute list, statute listed in every policy, our policies are all gonna need to be much longer.
Well, and I, I think that was my point, is that's why it's listed there, it's a legal reference. I, that it, it doesn't have to be in your policy, the policy is different than the statute, but the policy needs to follow the state statute. It can't be, it can't be out of compliance with the state statute. It can't be, I, I would guess, more lenient than the state statute.
Okay, so, and.
So what's the proposal to change the, like, what do you wanna see that is not referenced in the policy?
So almost every may that we communicate in this one is a shall in law.
Okay, so what, give me specific, like, strikeout, like, let's say number, um.
Sure.
Where am I looking at?
May I, just really quick? I, I think it just depends on how you want to author this policy. Because the policy as it's written in front of you right now is more from the perspective of what the parents may do for their kids versus what the district has to do for the kids. Does that make sense? Because it's written right now as may, being, I'm a parent, I go online, and I wanna see if my kids can take it. And you can see on here, oh, they absolutely may take classes here. It's not authored from the perspective of the school district must, because that would have to, that would be a separate tone, if that makes sense.
I could think that was kinda my, yeah, that was kinda my point, the same, the same thing that I said. Like, and he, like he says, shall and may are two very different things. Um, and so I guess I'm asking him what he thinks that needs to be changed in order to meet the state statute.
Can't the wording in there be just that, that you, that you're following state statute?
I think that's the point of having it cross, cross-referenced, but.
Say that anywhere here, I mean, can't you just say that?
I think Joe's saying that we're not though, right? Is that what you're saying, that we're not meeting state statutes, right?
Let me think what Jonathan's saying here. I guess if you think about it that way, John, you're probably correct. And if you think about it the way I, I read it, that the district, it should be a shall, but if you're thinking about it in your way, it should be, maybe it should be a may.
Yeah, I think it's just the difference in legal tone.
I only see may mentioned twice in here. And, and like the first sentence, you know, "Non-public school students, private school, and home-based, private educational program students may participate in public school courses and programs." I don't think we'd wanna say shall, because that's like telling them they have to.
Yeah, the other way that you would word that would be, the school district of Anne-Marie shall offer the opportunity for students to take upwards of two courses.
Yeah. I think, I think because it states shall in the law, though, I think that's the way it should be written.
So what would be the proposed change?
I'm gonna turn John into an attorney here. I'm not a policy writer.
I was raised by two of them.
I, well, which is cool, but you're the, you're the, you're the board member. So you're the only one that can actually change this, to propose to change the. So you're the only one that can actually change this, to propose to change the language, or ask, ask Sean to change the language, or... So what are you asking for?
Well, how about this? It's a re, you can't table this, 'cause I, I have enough scribbles on this paper to probably... Again, because again, I still think we have to look at, I still think we have to look at this policy and coincide it and, and, and look at this in regards to four twenty, that's already a school admission guidelines policy, to see how different they are.
So would you like to, instead of, instead of deciding this here, we don't, I have to take an action item on this. This is a first reading. There would be no action taken until it was a second reading. Would you like to just ask for more information on, would you like to have four twenty brought to the next month's meeting and bring this reading back with updates that you can, um, that we can talk about then at the next board meeting? Is that what you would prefer?
No, I would, I, again, I, I guess I would motion to table this until next month's meeting.
We don't.
Yeah, but that just brings back exactly what you've got.
Exactly.
Well, then, then I guess I'm, what did you say to the motion?
You don't have to motion anything. What I'm asking is, would you like, there's, this is not an action item. This is just a first reading. Would you like more time to be able to talk about what you think is different and then to bring rule four twenty, policy four twenty, back next month? And then look at those in a more comprehensive way next month.
Sorry, you're bringing changes back.
Why does this fall on me? Can't you guys see that there's issues with this also?
We're not voting on anything tonight. This is strictly a first reading.
Yeah, I'd like to see this come back.
But I'm just asking you, 'cause you, you have the issues. I understand the issues. What I'm asking is, if we don't do anything tonight, what you're gonna see is the same thing next month as a second reading, and there will be no changes made, and then we'll have, have this discussion from scratch again. So what I'm asking is, would we like to keep it as a first reading and bring it back next month? With changes. Like, that, we do this with all of our policies, that, you know, if we say, this is our first reading, I would like to see this, I would like to see that, and then they, then Sean makes those changes, and then we come back the next month, and then they're an action item, and then we vote on them then. But I would prefer not to see this come back as a second reading next month if we still have changes that we feel need to be made, and then bring it with another policy that we need to make changes to, or strike altogether. So that's what I'm asking. Would you like to move that along to next month?
I would.
Okay.
Um, I also have another question, is how, how, how are we coming up with these policies in the first place? Like, are, are we supposed to, was Sean supposed, was Dr. Dierfler supposed to be looking at updating policies? Or is he, are we supposed to be creating new policies?
Both. We're going through each series. We did the hundreds, two hundreds, three hundreds, and this is a four hundred. Uh, this was a policy recommendation from Sven Strutz's guidance in regards to a sample policy that speaks to the issue of course options as it relates to non-public school students. That's all this came to be. This was a recommendation from him.
And that's, that's usually the way all of our policy revisions happen, unless there's something that's just impractical or outdated, and then we just strike the whole policy. So things that we've been doing for, this is how we've, we've typically done them, probably as long as you've been on the board.
Yeah.
So they're, they're constantly being updated. It's, some things just get missed sometimes, or you end up with another policy that didn't particularly reference another policy, things that are outdated. I mean, I think we took out things like, uh.
Policies that made sense twenty years ago that don't apply today.
I think we took out like BlackBerries or something, that were like, and pagers and stuff out of our cell phone policy, so.
I'm not sure if anybody has a pager.
Nobody's had a pager since like the nineteen nineties or something, right? So, um, some things that just get, get missed in the course of time, which is, it happens everywhere, but that, that's why it's always good to keep looking at them, so, um. Is that a comfortable way of moving forward with this to next month?
I agree.
Okay. So we've covered, uh, both, uh, sub one and sub two on E, and then we'll move along then to the action items. Sean, if we can put that back on the agenda for January to come with changes, I would, um, ask that, uh, you maybe call Dr. Dierfler and with your proposed changes that you'd like to see, um, or if you have a question to call me, I can always contact the attorney, as, like, the WASB attorney or, uh, our district attorney as well. Um, okay, and then moving on to the action items is the second reading of board policy, policy two twenty.
Sorry, I think we still need to address four twenty-four, which is totally separate from the two and E.
Um, yeah, for some reason I thought we were doing that. Okay, so we're gonna, uh, take care of policy four twenty-four, public school open enrollment.
Just one phrase change there in, uh, A one, and it reads in that paragraph, however, students are already attending school in the district at the time of their application, and the siblings of students already attending school in district, and it notes presently, shall be accepted. That's been stricken to say, may be showing preference for enrollment in the district, even if the district has determined that space is not otherwise available for open enrollment students. Remember, each year we do a space limitation, typically based on special ed status of kids for each and every building. And in some cases, we are full, based on the services that we have to provide for the students that are in the population, and we simply can't accept anymore, 'cause we don't have enough staff to do it. This policy change would not obligate us to accept those kids. Just because they're siblings of, they would be given a preference. But right now, they shall be accepted, and that's not what we're presently doing. 'Cause if there's a space limitation at, say, the elementary for special ed, we've said no.
So there's that difference between shell and may, so.
Yes, there is.
Any discussion, any further discussion on, uh, public school open enrollment four twenty-four? Other than the proposed change, or even about the proposed change? Okay. We'll leave that one to come back for a second reading next month. So, second reading of board policy update, policy two twenty-two.
Okay, the verbiage that you saw last month, you see this month, and that is, last sentence of the third paragraph, the board is required by administrative contract to notify an administrator if their contract will be non-renewed by February first. And then the last sentence, failure to notify the administrator of the intent to non-renew shall automatically result in a one-year extension of the existing contract. I asked Steve Weld, he is the person that works contract at Weld Riley, to author an opinion. And it, again, it technically isn't your choice. It's in one eighteen point two four. Wisconsin State statute says that they shall be two-year. Um, as sort of further evidence of such, again, there are thirty-nine districts in, in CISA eleven. Twenty-eight of the thirty-nine responded for the district administrator portion of the survey, 'cause there were two questions, one for district administrator, one for building principals. Twenty-seven of the twenty-eight are using a two-year or a two-year rolling contract. The only one that is not, has a superintendent who is provisionally licensed, and they can't have a two-year contract if you run provisional, 'cause you may not have a second year. Provisional means just one year until you get your stuff in order. For building principals, it was twenty-eight out of twenty-eight are using a two-year rolling contract.
Discussion on policy two twenty-two, administrator contracts.
I think we need to move forward with the two-year rolling contract.
It's just that it shall not exceed two years, is the terminology, but that, right?
What do you mean? So that it won't be a three-year rolling contract?
Yeah, it's, a school board may employ a school district administrator, business administrator, school principals, assistant, assistants, as such persons, the term in each employment contract may not exceed two years. A contract for a term of two years may provide for a one-year or more extensions of one year each. In the law.
Yep. And that's presently what, uh, the district has been doing. So I think this language just kinda cleans that up. Uh, changes that November to January. And then the non-renewal time, so.
Make a motion to accept the changes as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the administrator contracts two twenty-two as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor of, uh, approving policy two twenty-two as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no.
No.
Is there any discussion of, um, what that looks like for you, what, anything that you would prefer to change?
Well, it's just the way you presented it in regards, it's, it's shall not exceed two years. It's not that you have to give a two-year, it shall not exceed two years. That's, that's the difference that I have right now. That's the difference.
So you're suggesting that, that the opinion of the lawyer was wrong, that we can do less than two years?
Shall not exceeds two years. So, and, and again, there were, there were what, two that were a year?
District administrator is only one, and that person, again, is provisionally licensed, they can't have a two-year.
But that's, but that's it. So my point is, is if, if it was just, if you'd just said, uh, the norm of our contract, and again, the policy that we're gonna create is that we stick with a two-year contract. Again, I, I think that, again, that really works well for, that really works well for the administrator. What happens, again, if it's midterm and they, and it's not working out well for us? Maybe as the last person in that position that you and I weren't here for. So they don't have to pay out.
You still gotta follow the law.
Well, you don't have to pay out two years then, is my point.
No, you have to pay out the remainder of the contract, but you have to still give the contract.
I think that's Joe's point, is that if it was midstream, then you're looking at maybe paying out a year plus. I think that's Joe's point.
Yeah, and I, and again, I hear complaints of the previous human being here, and it was difficult, and it was worth the payout, and I hate to hear that. That's why, that's, that's my why. Let's move on.
Okay, um, all those in, all those in favor was four, all of those opposed was one, with no proposed changes in language with that, that's it. So policy two twenty-two is approved and duly noted. Policy three forty-two point six, English language learners.
It's just word changes. The state no longer recognizes the phrase English language learners. They want them to be referred as English learners, so you're dropping an L, dropping a word, and nothing's changed from last month to this month.
Make a motion, we approve policy three four two point six as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve policy three forty-two, changes as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor of approving policy three forty-two point six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Policy three forty-four, adult education.
Nothing's changed from last month to this month. It's simply no longer the way we do business. Uh, we are, uh, as a district team, Tracy, John, Becky, and myself, working on a, the process for use of school facilities, 'cause that process now is about to take a very sizable change in light of the athletic complex, and if other entities are interested in using, say, for instance, the baseball field, uh, we need to have terms for what that looks like. So we're in that process of talking about that. But nothing has changed about this policy from last time to this time, 'cause the verbiage simply is an outdated, uh, policy.
Can we, can we strike this policy if you don't have the other one in play?
Uh, the other one we already have. It just needs to be modified, and you're gonna see that. It's in the eight hundreds. This one is, uh, simply not at all how we do business, and it's nineteen ninety-five, so it's not surprising it's outdated.
So my point, it doesn't leave you hanging by.
Does not leave us hanging, 'cause we have a policy that we're leaning on right now. We simply need to change it based on the changes that have occurred here on campus.
Then I propose we strike policy three forty-four.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to update policy three forty-four by striking the language as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor of updating policy three forty-four with the changes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Okay, off to early graduation requests. Mr. Gould.
Got a request this year, uh, at semester for nine seniors that have met the requirements for graduation and a variety of different reasons why some of them are doing it. Early entry into the military, some going into college, some are going right into the workforce. But nine students who we've met with, conferred with their parents, and they have met the graduation standards to be done. And I would recommend that we move forward with it.
Okay, all of those in favor, uh, uh, sorry, is there a motion to accept, uh, Mr. Gould's recommendation?
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the early graduation requests.
Dale, is there a second?
Second.
Joe, it's been properly moved and seconded to, uh, approve the early graduation request of the nine students that Mr. Gould has said meets the requirements. Is there any further discussion? All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Early graduation granted to nine kids. Go tell them and make them happy tomorrow. Okay, then we are moving along to an appointment of the WASB delegate. Mr. Dierfler.
Uh, the WASB convention runs from January twenty-second through the twenty-fourth, and we need an appointment of a WASB delegate. I understand that Steve is unable to attend based on scheduling conflict. Um, I am also not able to be there with my double duty happening at the elementary school. I can't be gone for that length of time. I'm not sure how you wanna proceed. I do have the, um, information that they sent in regards to all of the resolutions. That just came in on Friday.
Yeah, and I've got that at home as well.
Oh, you've got that, okay. I mean, you could leave Steve as that, and he can cast his vote, if you will, from afar. He simply just cannot be there, unless we have another volunteer to be there.
Um, and that is, where, if you needed to cast your vote, when did you have to have it in by?
I just got the pack in the mail, so I haven't even opened it yet.
Okay. Um, do you know how that's done, if he's not there?
I don't.
I know that last year when I was there, they never talked about any of those. You voted on the floor right then and there. So I don't even know that that's an option.
I don't know.
Okay. Is there anybody else that could attend?
I don't think it'd even be me. It has to be a, was the school board member. Yes, can't be me.
All right, right now I think we'll just, uh, leave it open, um, and then maybe Steve, if you wanna just check in to see if we can cast a vote. And then we kinda talked about having those discussions.
Right.
For those resolutions as a board.
Yep, if we can get a vote, then we'll call a special meeting together to go through those resolutions.
Yeah, I think that would be fantastic, so. Um, no action has to be taken on that right now at this time, so. Okay, donations to the district.
Uh, Deer Park Lions Club, a donation of five hundred dollars to the Angel Fund. Cardinal Glass, donation of AED device for the new athletic complex. And the Elkin family made a fourteen hundred dollar donation from the Elgo Memorial Golf Tournament to the Amory FFA program.
And do we need to include the five thousand dollars from the women's?
Yes, we do.
So I would, uh, move to amend our donations to include the five thousand dollars from the women's club tonight to the Angel Fund. Is there a second to, um, include that on the donations tonight?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on that? All of those in favor of amending the donations with the five thousand dollars from the women's club, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion passed. So our donations are now reflective of also the five thousand donation, five thousand dollar donation to the Angel fund from the women's club tonight. Um, and then do I have a motion to accept all presented donations tonight to the district?
I'll make that motion.
Dale, is there a second?
It's a huge night.
It's a huge night. That's, it's a lot of money.
I'll second that.
Okay, Steve, is there any further discussion on the donations? Fantastic, fabulous donations, and we appreciate them with many thanks. And all of those in favor of accepting those donations, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Donations accepted. A round of applause. Thank you very much. Community shows up all the time. And moving on to personnel action.
You should probably indicate your amendment of the particular document.
In prior closed session tonight, and that's usually what the board does when we meet in closed session. You'll often hear me say that the board met in closed session prior to the meeting, and we go through personnel action items, as that's where it's appropriate to do those. The board felt that it was important to make a change to the Personnel Action of a Termination pending some further discussion, and so this is now the new amended Personnel Action. Is there any further discussion on this? Is there a motion to accept the amended regular Personnel Action?
I move to accept the amended Personnel Action.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept the amended Personnel Action. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Personnel action items are approved. And then, community comments. And we do have somebody signed up for community comments tonight, so I'll read the guidelines for addressing the Board of Education. Welcome to this meeting of the School District of Amory Board of Education. We are pleased that you are interested in the work of the school board. You may address the board only during community comments time on the board meeting agenda. Any resident, district employee, or guest invited by the board may make comments about any decision, policy, or board meeting agenda items. The following guidelines have been established for addressing the Board of Education. For those wishing to speak to the board, a sign-up sheet will be available prior to start of the meeting. If the topic noted on the sign-up sheet is deemed to be out of order, the presiding board member will inform the person wishing to speak prior to start of the meeting. Community comments must pertain to a board decision, policy, or board meeting agenda item. Comment time is limited to five minutes per person. However, the time limit may be increased or decreased at the discretion of the presiding board member. Political speeches, which are not materially related to board decisions, policies adopted by the board, or are not about a board meeting agenda item, are strictly forbidden. Personal criticism of members of the Board of Education or employees of the school district are also strictly forbidden. Please stand to be recognized. After being recognized, state your name and the municipality where you live for the record. The board normally receives citizen input and does not respond or debate. If there is a need for an answer or a response to a concern or issue, the district administrator or one of the other administrators will get back to you with a response. If your concern requires board action, it may be placed on the agenda for a future board meeting. Please leave your name and contact information if you wish to be contacted by a member of the board or the district administrator regarding your community comment. And Stephanie Jansen is signed up, and I don't have a topic of comment. What would you be speaking on tonight?
Student enrollment.
Okay, thank you.
Stephanie Jansen, Garfield Township. I have here in front of me Third Friday Count for September. Our Third Friday Count in September was one thousand two hundred and ninety-four students. What Sean reported tonight was one thousand two hundred and sixty-six. We're down twenty-eight students in the last three months. Why? What's happening in our buildings where our parents and our kids don't want to be here? That's a large loss. If you look at what was presented tonight and the lost growth from year to year, we lost sixty students from last year to this year. Per Johns numbers, that's over three hundred thousand dollars in district funding. I understand it's on a three-year rolling average. But your business just took a three thousand, or three hundred thousand dollar hit. How are we gonna fix this? What are we gonna do? Sean, what, how are we gonna fix this? We can't keep going to the community for money. The enrollment is a big issue. You guys borrowed against the future budget, which is this enrollment. We already have an operational referendum to make payroll and things that this doesn't cover. The community just wants some success. You guys have got to start to acknowledge that we have a loss in district enrollment. There's resources out there to help us. We need to make better decisions. So, how are you gonna fix it?
You want us to bring more people to town?
Well, why are you spending so much money if you're acknowledging that we don't have the people to support it?
I, you know, and obviously I read the community guidelines, and so I understand your direct questions, and I think that, you know, we have asked you to be part of our strategic planning committee, and so you are coming on that committee, and I think that's a great place for a lot of those questions to happen.
But your community, your strategic planning committee, is that recorded for the public to see, or is that just for those in attendance?
No, it's a committee meeting, so it's generally not recorded, no. We generally don't pay somebody else to come in and do that.
These discussions need to be had in public. The community needs to know.
Yeah, so, okay, so if you'd like that to be on a board meeting, a future board meeting, like what, how would you envision having us have that discussion in public? Like, what specifically for budget? What are you asking for so that we can put that on the agenda?
Tonight is a perfect example. We didn't include Third Friday Counts on this, and we left out the fact that in three months, we had lost twenty-eight students. Let's have some transparency. Like, when are we gonna address, and how are we gonna address? And last month, you told the district that per student transportation, that wasn't enrolled into district funding, or into Third Friday Count. You said Third Friday Counts were used for district transportation, which tonight you contradicted that.
It's part of the equation.
That's what you clarified tonight. Yep, that's not what you said at the last meeting. Because the district got eighty-one thousand dollars in district transportation, and I'm not here to advocate for you guys to bus homeschool students. I don't speak for everybody here, and I don't think that we want that, but we want transparency and we want accountability.
Okay, so I guess I'm asking you something very specific. Like, we're not gonna, you know, like for community comments, this is generally not a back and forth. This is the board's meeting to conduct the business. So, what I'm asking is so that the board can conduct the business, is something very concrete. What would you like to see brought forth on an agenda specifically? What would you like to see happen?
Let's do a... Why doesn't the district, like, consider a forensic audit to look where every penny is spent? We're bonusing teachers? We're bonusing teachers that's not recorded on DPI. So, we have teachers in this district that are getting a bonus check of ten thousand dollars in June and another one in December.
So, what specifically are you asking for?
Well, let's show the numbers. Prove to me that I'm wrong. Prove to me that district enrollment isn't something that we should be concerned of.
Anything like that, Stephanie, I'm asking for a specific...
I just said that. Let's talk about, let's talk about a forensic audit.
I don't know how to bring that onto a board meeting agenda to have a conversation.
That's your job as a board president, so you asked me what I thought I gave you, I gave you what I have.
Okay.
How, on your, at your position on the board, how can you better serve the community with your budget?
Okay.
And addressing the declining enrollment. I came last month and I talked about declining enrollment. I wrote a letter in the paper two years ago, and I was called a liar. We're losing, we're losing enrollments.
Okay, well, I didn't call you a liar, and I'm not sure that anybody...
No, your superintendent called me a liar into the public.
I don't think anybody called you a liar. That would, that would not, I don't think anybody literally used the words, Stephanie Jansen, you're a liar.
No, they like to use other words, yeah.
Do that. I just want to figure out how to move forward in a better way so that I know specifically what you're asking for, and if you don't know what that is tonight, I'm certainly happy to email with you or to talk to you by phone so that we can figure out how to move forward and put something together that would be something that you're interested in having and that the board can have a business discussion about that.
Did you, did you publish the vouchers or the receipts? That was something that I asked the board to do last month.
That's not happening. There's confidential information in there.
There's not. Other districts do it. Other districts do the...
Vouchers?
Yes.
I highly doubt that.
Again, so that was actually...
But that wasn't a discussion. So, let's just say that that wasn't a discussion. You either, as a board or however that was discussed, decided that that didn't need to be brought forward. There was no follow-up with the concerns of the community.
Okay, so would you like to see that?
This is gonna fall on you guys. You are the board president. You will, as a board, be responsible for the finances of this district and of this community.
Yes, totally agree.
We are, they are looking to build a new daycare in town, and we already paid for one.
You don't have the right information. The city is not...
I never have the right information, Steve, but you're the one taking sources from him. You're not doing your own research.
Okay, I, the board...
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And if you would like to email me, or I can email you in contact to get into contact with you about that, I'd be certainly happy to look at that further.
I want everything in the public. Every discussion about everything should be in the public. It should be for the public to hear what's happening.
You need to recognize that the school board is the voice of the public. We are elected to oversee the business of the school.
You just sat there and said that we don't question them because they're the experts.
Okay, as the chairman, we're out of order here. This is off of the subject. Our board meetings, we can decide to have board meetings. Maybe we need to have a discussion about a board meeting a week, because that's a lot of conversation that needs to be had in the public. That's a lot of conversation that we trust our staff to take care of, that bring us the information. If that's what we need to do to make the public happy, then that needs to be something that we can talk about, and we'll talk about that at a future board meeting. So, with that, we need to, I think, go into closed session to wrap up some things, some prior things. So, I will take a motion to go into closed session.
I move to go into closed session.
Is there a second?
Second, Dale.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to go into closed session for considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in order to take personnel action pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five-one-C.
I need a break.
Okay, I'll let you, I'll let you have that after we make this vote. All those in favor of adjourning into closed session, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Okay, motion granted. We'll reconvene in closed session after Jill has a break.